All right. Well, thank you so much for attending. For those of you who don't know me, my name is Corinne Moss. I am the program manager for the newly renamed Grants for Enhancing Massachusetts Grid Resilience and Reliability Program. This was, we used to be referring to this program as the 40101D program. So you're in the right place if that's what you were looking for. So I'm joined by the rest of our Massachusetts Grid Resilience team today. We have Sarah Collin and our senior program director, Jacob Chaplin, our program administrator, and Maya Mastrow, our fellow. So I know many of you are probably familiar with this funding opportunity by now, but I'm just going to do a little bit of intro and background to make sure we're all on the same playing field. So this funding is federal funding. It's a formula grant opportunity. It was established by the bipartisan infrastructure law with the goal of preventing outages and enhancing the resilience of the electric grid. All right, next slide, please, Maya. Okay, so today, like I said, we're just going to do a quick overview of the program. And then the meat of today's meeting is to discuss an update to the program narrative regarding the small utility set aside. And then we will have time for comments and questions at the end. So just a couple of housekeeping things before we get started. Please stay on mute if you're not speaking. Please feel free to put questions or comments in the chat as we go along, and we'll do our best to address them. Attendees will also have the opportunity to ask questions and contribute public comment at the end of the session. This is being recorded, and it will be posted on Mass C E C's website following the session. And we'll also be emailing slides to all of their registrants afterwards. So just to give you some background about Mass C E C, for those of you who aren't familiar with us, we are a quasi-public state agency focused on clean energy economic development. We are committed to incorporating D E I and environmental justice in all of our work and to prioritizing equitable clean energy solutions, which I think is evident throughout the design of this program. And we've been designated by the governor as the administrator of this funding program. Next slide, please, Maya. Awesome. So this formula funding program is meant to enhance the resilience and reliability of the electric grid. It's a formula funding opportunity, so every state and tribe is eligible for predetermined annual allocation of funding between fiscal years 22 and fiscal year 26. So Massachusetts allocation is approximately $4.5 million annually. And this program has a period of performance of five years, so that may be expanded up to 10 years if needed. So the funding aims to enhance the resilience of the electric grid, prevent outages, and mitigate the impact of disruptive events. Thus far, the Commonwealth has been awarded its first three years of formula funding totaling about $13.5 million. The program was originally co-developed by Mass C E C and D O E R and was developed to improve energy reliability and resilience, support the state's decarbonization efforts, advance environmental justice, and create good-paying clean energy jobs. A few other thing I'll note is that Massachusetts has developed this program to enhance resilience and particularly building-level resilience. We're particularly interested in this topic, but any eligible activity defined by D O E will be considered. Massachusetts is also encouraging applications for projects that have been designed in collaboration with communities and partnerships with community-based organizations are strongly encouraged. So just a few other things to note about our program. So these are the eligible sub-awardees that are defined by D O E. So just give folks a minute to glance over these. And I'll note that if anyone is interested in applying under the any other relevant entity category, please get in touch with Mass C E C, and we can help you through that. Okay, next slide, please. These are the eligible activities that the funding can be used for, also determined by D O E. So I'll just give folks a minute to glance over these. Next slide, please. Maria, I see your question about who you should contact in particular for designation. We have our email address later in the slide deck. It's grid@massc.com. So please feel free to get in touch with us that way, and somebody from our team can get in touch with you. All right, so there are a couple of other stipulations of this funding program established by D O E. So the first one is the small utility set aside. So D O E has separated eligible applicants into two categories: small entities and large entities. So D O E has defined small entities as eligible sub-awardees that sell some electricity, but not more than 4 million megawatt hours annually of electricity. While large entities are eligible sub-awardees that either sell more than 4 million megawatt hours of electricity annually or that do not sell electricity. The legislation requires states to make funding available to small entities proportionate to the number of customers who are served by small entities. So we'll be coming back to this in a second, but just wanted to talk through one other part of the program first. This program also requires a cost match for all sub-awardees. And the cost match is determined by entity size. So large entities are required to provide between a match of between 100 and 115% of the award, while small entities are required to provide between 1/3 and 1/3 plus 15% of the award. We've gotten a couple of questions about this recently, so I just want to clarify that. So the 100% and 1/3 cost match are required by D O E. The state cost match is that additional 15% portion. So our sort of baseline expectation is both the federal cost match plus the state cost match. If that additional 15% is prohibitive for applicants, we encourage you to provide justification in the application for state assistance to meet that cost match. So based on those justifications, the required cost match that will fall within those specified ranges will be determined upon subaward notification. All right, next slide, please. All right, so this brings us to the meat of our presentation for today. So Mass C E C will be updating its program narrative that we submit to D O E to redefine the percent of customers in Massachusetts that are served by small utilities and therefore are small utility set aside. So some of you may remember that Mass C E C previously estimated that 59% of customers are served by small entities in Massachusetts. We made this estimation using a data source suggested by D O E. Specifically, it's Form 861-S submitted to the Energy Information Administration, or Form 861. There are two versions. So you may also remember that we got some questions about how this could be possible, because 59% seems like quite a large number. So this led us to revisit the data source to see if it was an accurate representation for Massachusetts. And we discovered that the data source, in fact, did not provide an accurate representation of the distribution services that utilities in Massachusetts provide. So the issue specifically revolved around the type of electricity sales that was summarized by the data source. So the data source that D O E recommended only includes reports of bundled electricity sales. So these are electricity sales where the utility both buys electricity on behalf of the customer and then delivers that electricity. Many customers in Massachusetts purchase their energy from third-party suppliers, such as through a community choice aggregation program or another third-party supplier buy-in. And, but the utility is still responsible for delivering that electricity. So the bundled electricity sales don't really capture the full picture of the services that utilities are providing in Massachusetts. So Mass C E C identified a data source that is more accurate for Massachusetts and estimates that 13.5% of customers are served by small entities. So the form that we originally used also collects a lot of other types of data. So we identified the part of the form submitted to E I A where utilities report both their bundled sales and their delivery sales. And that's the data that we use to make this calculation. We ensured that there's, we don't think there's any double counting, and we think that this accurately represents the full picture of electric service in Massachusetts. I'll also note that the, some MLPs report data to the E I A, but not all of them. So in the case where MLPs did not report data to the E I A, Mass C E C used data from the annual returns that the companies submit to the D P U to determine both the number of customers served by those utilities and the amount of electricity sold. So just to clarify, the big, the thing that caused the big change from 59% to 13.5% is that in our former calculations, EverSource counted as a small utility, and now EverSource is considered to be a large utility. Next slide, please. So just to clarify what exactly will change. So just to reiterate, D O E requires states to make funding available to small entities proportionate to the number of customers who are served by small entities. So accordingly, 13.5% of the funding will be made available to small entities. I know this seems like a big shift. Mass C E C is certainly aware that this is, this seems like a large change, and I just want to stress that this is the minimum amount of funding that must be made available to small utilities. It does not in any way limit the amount of funding that may be awarded to small entities. With that said, Mass C E C is planning to update its program narrative to reflect that 13.5% of customers are served by small entities, and that accordingly, 13.5% of the funding will be made available to those entities. So we'll get to public comment and questions in just a second, but just wanted to give a couple of additional program updates before we get to that. So like I said earlier, Mass C E C received its fiscal year 24 allocation of funding in early September. That allocation was approximately $4.3 million, bringing our total available program funding to $13.5 million. So this amount of funding is currently available to us. I'm sure many of you know that we have an open solicitation right now for this funding that closes on October 4th. Mass C E C may award up to $13.5 million during this current solicitation round, but certainly does not have to. But just wanted to let folks know that this is the adjusted amount that may be available. And also just wanted to note that we are planning to open the solicitation twice a year. Subject to change, but that's the schedule that we're anticipating for now. And then just a reminder that the application deadline is approaching. Applications for the current solicitation round are due on October 4th. I just want to note, we received some guidance from D O E last week that they are requiring a different version of the NEPA environmental questionnaire. So that questionnaire is available now on our website. If you are planning to apply and you haven't yet submitted your application, please use this new version of the form. If you've already submitted your application, there will be a chance to submit the updated version. Please submit all materials to grid@massc.com, and please don't hesitate to get in touch with us if you have any questions. All right. So we will now move into the public comment and question portion of the session. So we're accepting verbal comments today, and then we will also be submitting written comment until the end of the day on September 26th. So we will be transcribing any comments and questions that are asked in this Q and A session and in the chat to make sure that we have all of them. And if we do receive any questions, we will post responses to any of those questions on our website by October 2nd. So please feel to either use the chat to submit your questions or use the raise hand function, and we can take questions that way. So I see there are already some in the chat. I can start looking through these. All right, when will the second solicitation round be? We aren't 100% sure yet, but thinking that it will probably be sometime in spring of 2025. Other questions? One thing I'll just note about the question about the second solicitation round, we are planning to give a 90-day window for applications. So once we open the second solicitation round, applicants will again have 90 days to apply for that solicitation. So there should be ample notification and lead-up for that next round. Yes, we do have a mailing list. Maybe Jacob or Maya, could you please put our our subscribe link in the chat? We do have a, like a grid newsletter that updates folks on all of our happenings with our Net Zero Grid program. So we'll just add the link in where you can sign up for that. Okay, another question. Other than the minimum 13.5% set aside for small utilities, there is no other guidance or policy on the allocation of funds between large and small, correct? Yes, that's correct. So D O E has only specified the small utility set aside that I discussed. That states and tribes must make funding available for small entities proportionate to the number of customers served by those entities. I'll also note that Massachusetts has also committed to making 40% of awards in, for environmental justice or disadvantaged communities. So that's a target that we have defined for ourselves, separate from small versus large entities, but that's another thing we're considering when making awards. If all $13.5 million is not awarded in this round, the remainder would be available in the spring 2025 round. Yes, that's correct. So we're planning to open the solicitation twice a year until all funding is exhausted. We also expect to receive two more years' worth of funding allocation. So one likely in summer 2025, one in summer 2026. And we anticipate that those will be probably around $4 million, though the allocations haven't been released yet. All right. Could you walk through how the amount of funding allocated to each project is determined? So as part of the application, applicants submit a requested funding amount. Mass C E C may choose to fund the project or may work with applicants to determine an appropriate funding amount. But we have not set a minimum or maximum amount of funding that applicants can receive through the program. Not sure if that answers your question, but let me know. Will the scoring rubric stay the same for subsequent solicitation rounds? I don't think we entirely know for sure yet. I think we'll be learning a lot through this first solicitation round, as we already have and continue to learn more about this project every day. I think some things will certainly not change, and those things will be small utility set aside, the 40% of funds for environmental justice and disadvantaged communities and other requirements from D O E. So for example, D O E requires that awards be made to projects that provide the greatest community benefit. So that will remain part of our scoring rubric. And then a follow-up to that question for this current round, I thought I heard the emphasis is on building resiliency and community partnerships. Yes, so Mass C E C has designed the program with a particular emphasis on building-level resilience, so solutions potentially including microgrids and projects that are designed in partnerships with communities. Those things are all defined in the program narrative that Mass C E C submitted to D O E to receive the funding. Should we change any of those parts of our program? We would need to hold another public hearing and receive feedback on that change. So again, there would be ample notice and opportunities for participation should we change that aspect of our program. All right, we have a couple more questions. Is the project type finite? Is installation of large-scale batteries applicable to this grant? Energy that is returned to the grid. Maya, could you please go back to the slide about eligible activities? So this list of eligible activities has been defined by the bipartisan infrastructure law legislation and is not subject to change. So you'll notice here that one of the eligible funding uses is the user construction of distributed energy resources for enhancing system adaptive capacity during disruptive events, including microgrids and battery storage subcomponents. So battery storage, excuse me, is an eligible use of funding under this program as long as the batteries are used for resilience purposes. A follow-up to that question, or battery energy that can be available to communities during an outage? Yeah, again, batteries, microgrids, energy storage components that are used for resilience purposes are eligible, are an eligible activity under this program. Would broadband be an appropriate project type? I think the short answer to that is no, as it's not included in this list of eligible activities. And projects must be focused on grid resilience and reliability. Other questions? So the takeaway is that proposals with building-level resilience and high level of community partnership and engagement would score higher. So Mass C E C has released a full scoring rubric that will be used to evaluate these projects. I'm happy to pull it up and screen share it. Just pull that up. So for those who are familiar with our application materials, this is attachment G for the scoring rubric. All right, so this is the scoring rubric that we'll be using for this round. And again, it's available on our R F P page. So as you can see, there are several different categories of areas where applicants can score points. So engagement with communities and building-level resilience are certainly reflected here. So for example, those are probably reflected in this resilience and reliability benefits and community engagement section. So you can see that each section has a total point value that will add up to 100 points. And then over on the right, we have definitions of how an applicant could receive each level of scoring. So we're going to be evaluating projects on a whole host of items. Just because something is strong in one area doesn't mean that it, and not strong in another, doesn't mean that it won't necessarily receive a high score. So these items will not be scored individually. They'll be scored sort of in aggregate. And these things on the left are considerations that reviewers should keep in mind when reviewing applications. There are also sections about job creation and training and associated community benefits, and additional selection criteria that are described in the R F P. So hopefully that answers your question about how applications will be scored. But please let me know if there are any remaining questions. The next question is, would underground surveying and utility mapping be eligible for this program? Maya, could you please pull up the list of eligible activities again? If that activity maps on to one of these eligible activities, it would be considered eligible for funding. So if, I don't know, Sarah, feel free to jump in on this one also.
I don't know, it's a good question. We have had to go to DOE to kind of dig down into how they would categorize. They, the feedback we've received from them is that it's kind of the law, like this is the letter of the law, and so they do need to kind of go back to their legal team to make decisions about how these might be interpreted to include something that wouldn't traditionally be considered, which might be the case for you, Cam. So if you want to follow up with a question, we can bring it back to our team at DOE and see what their finding would be.
All right, we have another question. We are contemplating a replacement of some very old underground cables without community engagement, which now I understand is not a focal point of this current round, even though it is an eligible activity. Yes, so I also want to reiterate that MASC CC will be accepting proposals from any eligible entities for any of the eligible activities listed here. So projects that don't necessarily involve like building level resilience or the other priorities that we talked about will still be considered for funding. Other questions? I'll plan to stay on until one, in case other folks have questions that they want to ask in a smaller forum or in case anyone else hops on. But just a reminder that if you would like to submit written comment on the change to the program narrative, please do so by the end of the day on September 26. And as always, please feel free to email us with any questions at grid@masccc.com. So thanks all very much for attending. Really appreciate your questions and input. So anyone still on the call have questions about the program? Things that we can help clear up? Jacob and Maya, I think we can go ahead and stop the recording.